I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 27, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file?
Yes, in this evening's table file, you had some additional appointments. Increased, decreased, change in assignment, a leave of absence, and you also had the financial report for June 2018.
Okay, excellent. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Hillman?
We just have a couple of announcements this evening. First, we want to thank Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Grace Hansen, who was in charge of our new teacher workshop last week, and I believe we ended up with 20?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two new staff members this year, which is actually new teaching staff numbers, which is actually one of the lowest numbers we've had in several years. And so those staff were in for at least two days, and special education, new special education teachers were actually here for three days. And so just really a great job by Mary and Cheryl Hall and our building principals in terms of helping integrate our new teaching staff into the district. Really important that they get up to speed on a few things. They need a little additional time before our workshop week this week. So thank you very much for the great new teacher workshop. And then this morning, we held our opening back-to-school breakfast and recognition ceremony. And so we just had a wonderful time. It was actually quite fun. There's not much I enjoy more than watching colleagues reconnecting after the summer. How many school districts have a harpist welcoming people? Sarah Swan McDonald, as you know, 2017 Minnesota Teacher of the Year finalist. She played her harp as people came in. We had a little red carpet, so people felt special as they came through. Julie gave some excellent opening remarks to staff. We had our own Noel Stratmon and Joel Lear, Kevin Dahl, and Tony Matheson perform "What a Wonderful World." Northfield High School math teacher Ray Kudre, also a very talented musician, performed as well. And then we had, you know, certainly a highlight was our three raider speech captains who performed a bit called "A Tribute to Our Teachers" from the works of poet and educator Taylor Molly. And so really, just a great morning. I had a chance to address the staff. And then we also recognized staff for the years of service. We had a number of people at the 20-year level, five people who are starting their 25th year of service, and then Gail Cole, a teacher at Bridgewater, and Mary Magnuson, a teacher here at the high school there, celebrating their 30th year of service. And then Assistant Principal at our high school, Jeff Echoff, was recognized for 35 years of service. So we also had a number of prizes that were donated from the community to show their appreciation for our staff. We gave away a bunch of stuff from the community, which was great. It appeared to be a real feel-good kind of atmosphere and really getting the stage set for a successful 2018-19 school year. So we had a lot of fun. We want to thank Mark Waitala, a high school industrial technology teacher, for creating the plaques for us, the years of service plaques, and Stephanie Strummy and her child nutrition team, Great Breakfast. So really, a positive start to the 2018-19 school year today. Those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent. It was really a great event. And it's the third year that we have done that. That was something that Dr. Hillman initiated when he became superintendent, and I think it's really, really great. Wonderful atmosphere, wonderful spirit, everyone excited, and some good messages being presented about, you know, how we're moving forward as a district. So it's great. Anything, anyone would like to add? Amy?
I just want to say that Noel can really sing.
Yes.
Great job.
I'm blessed.
It was just a great program, and I think those of us who happened to have interaction with staff members today heard very positive things. So I was out at the mailbox, and my neighbor came across the street and had to tell me how much she thought it was a really great program, so.
That's what we're aiming for. Motivation, inspiration.
Yeah. Good. Okay, good. So we will move on now to items for discussion and report. We have two reports this evening. We'll begin with Sibley Elementary School, and here to present is Principal Scott Sanus. Welcome, Scott.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present our school improvement plan from Sibley Elementary. I feel very blessed to be starting my 20th year at Sibley this year and fortunate to work with just a really dynamic staff. Interesting part about this new teacher workshop is this was the 20th summer I've hired for Sibley, and we didn't have one licensed teacher to hire. I've had to hire, I've been fortunate to hire somebody every year, but this was the first year we brought everybody back. We didn't have retirements, resignations, that kind of thing. So that's exciting, but it makes for a different start to the year. You know, we're not welcoming those newbies as we are used to. We have an extremely supportive parent population at Sibley, a host of volunteers from Carlton, St. Olaf, the parent community, other folks from the community that are coming on a daily basis and support all of our efforts. So when I talk about Sibley Elementary tonight, I'm talking about the greater good. It's everybody that really does support us. We're excited about the year ahead. We're looking forward to the full implementation of collaborative literacy in the near future, and we're excited about some changes in our EM4 from last year that we saw some good results with. So tonight, I'm going to be sharing some of our key components from our work this past year, providing a glimpse of what lies ahead as we embark on this new school year. We had some key wins in the classroom last year. Unfortunately, I can't report that data just yet. That'll be available on Thursday, when the MCA results are made more public. As I move into the slide presentation tonight, please feel free to stop me at any time if you have some burning questions. We're going to start with our continuous improvement. Sibley Elementary focuses all practices on students and their continued improvement academically and socially. It's something that we've always looked for. We were the first school that started looking at that social curriculum a long time ago. And what we've done as a district is really exciting as we move forward here with that social curriculum. We strive to work with families, the community, and the community supports all aspects of each and every student at Sibley. We have a number of students in our student population that have disabilities, and we work very hard at making sure that we educate, as Matt said this morning, every student in our school community. We've worked hard at developing a growth mindset with both students and staff, so that's something our students are learning along the way, and it's something our staff learned initially as we started talking about that growth mindset. And it's something we continue to do. Literacy, math, and social-emotional professional development is occurring each month at Sibley. And a little bit more about that staff development. I meet with our literacy coach, Becky Gani, our math coach, who is joining us again, Tanya Will, and our behavior coach, Peg Witt, on a weekly basis. And we plan what staff development opportunities we're going to provide for our staff. We have a monthly staff meeting. A lot of times, it's been themed, either like last year, we worked a lot on the social-emotional curriculum and the math curriculum early on, literacy curriculum as we started looking more at that collaborative literacy. I anticipate that a great share of our staff development will be focused on that collaborative literacy as we move into this school year. But I know the district has already set aside some time to do that as well. Our 2017-18 school improvement goal review, all six grade levels have partially met or completely met mid-year and end-of-year SMART goals. And that's something that we set during our PLC Wednesday morning meetings. If something isn't working, a lot of times what we'll do is we'll make sure that we readjust what we're doing, how we're teaching, and how we go about our business. So there used to be a time when we set those PLC goals for the end of the year. And what we've done the last several years is we've made those shorter goals, so if things aren't working, we can monitor and adjust and make the changes that we need to make during that time. We've reviewed, as I mentioned, our preliminary MCA data, and we have some big wins, and that's really exciting for all of us. Teachers have received training and have made some progress with our climate goal. And I have, you know, special note here about our climate goal. Our climate goal is focused more on staff inching more towards the four-to-one praise-to-reprimand ratio. So when I measured that last year, we basically averaged a three-to-one ratio. So we're going to talk more about that as we start getting into the school year and talk more about modeling and having teachers practice that and using that as they move forward and work with kids on a daily basis. Our key reflections from the 17-18 school improvement plan. The SMART goals at each grade level were stretch goals, and based on our prior MCA data, they are gathered at last year's Ready, Set, Go Day or the first few weeks of school. This Wednesday, we start, we have our Ready, Set, Go Day, and we're able to catch about 90% of our students. The other 10% are usually on vacation, you know, traveling with family, are not able to make it that day. So we do conduct those assessments once the school year starts. PLC teams were laser-focused last year on their goals, and student achievement was raised because of their efforts. The Move Five literacy effort in grade three had a positive impact and provided third-grade teachers with some additional funding for reading support and creative and innovative instruction. And the Move Five, the really cool thing about the Move Five is it brought all of our district's third-grade teachers together, and they were sharing ideas and bouncing ideas off of one another. But also with the STRIVE grant that we're working on, we did pair up with Red Wing Public Schools, too, and there was some sharing that went back and forth between Red Wing third-grade teachers and Northfield third-grade teachers. The supplementation rearranging of the fifth-grade lessons proved to be a winning combination in math. If you remember, the year previous, I was reporting on our math. MCA data came back, and it just didn't look good. And we did teach that curriculum with fidelity. We taught it in the way that it was presented to us. But at the same time, there was a Minnesota, what's that called? Minnesota Essentials, EM4 Minnesota Essentials, that was basically some added lessons, and there were some rearranging that went on with when things are taught. And that really did bode well for our fifth graders. So that was exciting last year. And then the Second Step curriculum was implemented successfully, and character traits were taught. And Peg Witt was very instrumental in making sure that we knew what we had to do when we hit the ground running last fall. The really cool thing is it's not something that we just worked on and we're letting go. We are continuing that year, too, with the same amount of focus as we move forward. Our school improvement plan academic goals for this year. Kindergarten, the percentage of students identifying 100% of tested letter sounds by the end of the year will be 90% or higher, something that we've been striving for for quite some time. Grade one, the percentage of students meeting their student growth from fall to spring on the math test will meet or exceed 70%. Second grade will meet or exceed 60%. We chose those numbers, and I say we, Hope Langston and I chose those numbers based off of where students were at this year. So those are goals that would increase the level of the percentage of students that meet that student growth target. And then in grades three, four, and five, the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency on the 2019 MCA reading test will exceed the MAP to MCA projected proficiency score by 10% or more. And that's something, this year, I think we were in that 5% to 8%, so we're looking at getting that 10% or more in that area. Goals continued math, 90% of our students will identify numbers correctly up to 100 by the spring of 2019. And then for grades one through five, this is a district goal, and it came from our math committee. 80% of our students will score 80% or higher on the six selected everyday math unit tests. And that's something that gets reported every time we take a unit test. I believe everything goes initially to Mary, correct? And then Mary shares it out with, I mean, we have access to it, but Mary shares it out with us periodically. And then behavior, to improve student behaviors with the implementation of best practice, 85% of staff will engage in the four-to-one praise-to-reprimand ratio as measured by classroom observation. And this is really a way to be proactive with students and, you know, catch them being good, but also changing their terminology when they talk to students. So, you know, they're looking at being more positive from every angle as they move forward.
Harper, can we add one? You said to do that.
Perfect. Look at that.
The question discussion slide you're going to use.
Yes.
You said to jump in if we had a question, so it feels impolite. When you do the four-to-one ratio when the person is observing, is that the teacher, anything they say to the group or to an individual student?
Anything they say to the group.
Okay.
Or an individual student. So I'm the one doing the documentation in the classroom. And the nice thing about that is I can be in there and do that while I'm observing other things as well. But it is pretty much everything that is said in the classroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, as long as we're on that topic, I'd like to segue with another question. When you talk about the ratio, the praise ratio, how, and the language around that, how does that mesh with the Second Step curriculum? Has that, is that a completely sort of different set of language, or did it?
I think there are a lot of similarities. You know, I mean, I would say there's more of an unintentional mesh. You know, it's not something that, we didn't seek out the Second Step because of that, but this is something that came from, you know, 30 years of research, and Peg and I were talking about it one day during one of our meetings. You know, just being proactive and looking at ways to catch children doing good things. You know, I wrote down a couple of things here. You know, an easy example would be, you know, "Great job being quiet, Michael," versus "be quiet." You know, so you add that praise in there. Another one is "thank you for keeping your hands to yourself" versus "don't touch him." You know, so there are, it's just the nuance of it. And it makes sense, and people are catching on and working on it.
And I think the strategy is agnostic to the curriculum, because if you think about it, it's the research about the action rather than the curriculum. But I think what the key thing is that the language can reinforce those instructional pieces. So I, based on the two teacher surveys that we did with Second Step last year, one of the top things that our teachers really appreciated was the common language that it created for all of them. So while I've not observed this directly, I think Scott could speak to the fact that I'm sure he saw people reinforcing some of the concepts that we had taught in Second Step. And then what the four-to-one is also very, meshes very well with the responsive classroom approach, which we can still continue to use. So the four-to-one is about really a tactic that you use. And if you think about it, it could be used in mathematics, you know, it could be used in with providing feedback. It's really a feedback technique rather than a specific curriculum, which I really appreciate about it because there's a wealth of research behind it, you know, talking about reframing things for students in the pot, what do we want them to do, as opposed to telling them what we don't want them to do.
Right.
And it sounds, but think about someone with you who's positive with you on a regular basis and how you think about your relationship with them and what you're willing to do, you know, in that circumstance, rather than if someone is always saying, "Stop doing this." You know, I mean, that's just, it's just a different feeling. So I have really appreciated that tactic because it really reinforces a lot of other things, and it can be used anywhere.
Sure can.
Excellent. Other questions? Amy?
So I just, let me turn on my mic. So I'm thinking about everything and trying to understand better. So if a kid is poking another kid, you would say, "Thank you for keeping your hands to yourself?"
Well, we still do redirect, you know, but it might be using another student as an example, a student who's making good decisions at that time, and saying, you know, "Thank you for keeping your hands to yourself, you know, Jeffrey," that kind of thing. Sorry.
So, yeah, because there's actually, that's two very different things when.
Right.
Yeah, and so that's what I was trying to.
There are times.
Because if you're really praising kids, you're telling them when they're doing it on their own and they're keeping their hands to themselves.
Right.
And you're not telling them in a way to get them to stop poking.
Right. But this is, like I said earlier, this is a much more proactive way to approach it. There are times when we have to intervene. And, you know, there is that more negative connotation to something, giving more of a directive. But at the same time, you know, we're trying to, you know, fill up a jar with all these positives.
Right, and that's good.
Right.
So I have another question, and it's maybe just trying to explain things to me. I was looking on the first sheet that was sent to us. Let's see if I, well, first of all, it looks like, you know, under results, that when you had 93% of students scoring in the top bracket for, in the first box, that sounds wonderful, actually. Was that higher than you projected, or was that what you would think would happen?
Well, it's tough, because every kindergarten group that we get is a little bit different. But it's, I mean, when we see 93%, that is great news. And, you know, there was a lot of work that likely went on before that to get to that point, but when we did our measure of the consonant, of all consonant word stretch assessment, that's what we came up with.
Great.
Yeah.
Then I have another question. For second grade, under goal, we'll increase math skills of all second graders so that 75% will meet or exceed their personal growth goal. This is the same question I asked last time, but I'm going to ask of you. So if they have a personal growth goal that's for them, I mean, 75% sounds good, but isn't it already gauged for the individual student, what their growth goal is? So.
It is. And how I would answer that is that, you know, the NWEA comes up with that after a random sample of questions. And I've seen it be pretty accurate, but it's not dead-set accurate as far as what that growth goal can be like. You know, we're assessing students who are coming into us with all kinds of different situations going on in their lives, maybe in school, that kind of thing. And this was just kind of a stamp in time when they took that assessment. I think the largest I've ever seen was probably about 85%. And we've been using NWEA for years.
Yes, yes.
I think it was maybe 2001 we started. I remember going to a workshop in Oatana on that. But, yeah, it is, I remember Dr. Roger Jenny, who was our assessment coordinator, and he said 70%. If you're getting 70%, you're doing well with that.
Great. Then I was just trying to understand the results for second grade, too, just to make sure I get that. So the part that I was a little bit confused about is at the very end, 19% had an initial map above the year-end target of 192. So you already had kids who were scoring higher at the beginning of the year than was even.
Right.
So what happens to those kids? Do they then get another target score?
They do.
Even higher.
They do. What usually happens is, you know, students who come in in first or second grade, let's say they're scoring at 168, and maybe the year-end target is, you know, 182, I'm just making that up right now, but their growth target might be 15 points. We also get students who come in and they've surpassed that growth target already, and let's say they're at this 192, their target might be three or four points. It really depends on the individual. We see that a lot in fifth grade with our students who are scoring in the, you know, 245 to 250 range. They might have a growth target of, you know, two or three points on that NWEA assessment, whereas some of their classmates, you know, might come into fifth grade and be at 212 and have a growth target of 20 points. So it really does vary from student to student.
Thank you.
You bet.
Great question. Thank you. Paula?
Thanks for such a great report. So my questions are kind of following up on what Amy had. And so Northfield Forward had reviewed all the site improvement plans. And so one of the things that had come up in discussion was related to that, and it's sort of a little confusing because of the growth goals. And so I just, in terms of clarifying, so last year, the PLC SMART goals were stretch goals. And so like at grade two, it was 75%, and then this year, grade two is at 60%. So part of that is still, you know, it achieved 55% last year, so thinking about, let's push it a little bit more, but let's have it be something more doable. And thinking, and then the other piece that I guess is part of that question is the thing that came up in Northfield Forward when they were looking at these growth goals was an understanding that it's not just looking at an achievement gap, because we want all students to grow. So when you look at the 60%, you don't say, "Wow, we're thinking 40% of the gap is okay." And it's not that at all. It's just some students are up at the ceiling, and it's just knowing that it's going to be harder. We want them all to grow, but it's figuring out a goal that's doable. Is that, help me a little bit understand?
No, that's exactly right. And I was a part of that Northfield Forward piece when we reviewed these plans. And it is difficult to pinpoint. You know, I sat down with Hope last week when we were looking at this, and, you know, we talked about it a lot and decided on the percentages that are there based off of last year's data. You know, so we're looking at that cohort of students in grade one, that cohort of students in grade two, and trying to come up with something that is a bit of a stretch goal, but also realistic.
Harvey?
Yeah, I had jumped in before your questions and discussion page, so again, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
But this is an excellent report, and I'm always impressed from any of the Northfield schools, how many plates you and your staff juggle. I mean, not just classroom management and the child who's about to vomit, but all of this that's happening, that's going on, and that you manage it all amazingly well, and the staff. And you know, there's one name that keeps coming around that I just have to give a shout out to, Hope Langston. Without good data to give us a good picture, we can't make good plans. And we're very lucky to have her.
That's right.
In all of these improvement projects. So.
Absolutely.
Big thank you to Hope and to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Jeff?
I guess I might ask you. Thanks for the report. Same question I asked the other two, the other two schools. What do we do for unity in your mind as far as, you know, keeping all three schools connected?
You know, that's a great question, and I believe that one thing that's really pulling us together, not that we've ever been separated, but when, like I said, this is my 20th year here, and I've seen a lot of things. I've never seen the district be on the same page with literacy. And that's something that's pulling people together. I mean, we've had the same ideas, and everybody's been, you know, rowing the boat in the same direction, but to have the same resource, the same training, all happening at the same time, that's exciting. You know, we have people that are just jazzed about it. And, you know, that's a really cool thing. I think the other thing is that, you know, our math instruction has been solid for years. We started everyday math, first day I met with teachers in 1999. That's when we implemented everyday math. So, you know, that's a great thing, too. Something else that we saw last year, we provided our third-grade teachers during that Move Five plan with opportunities to really collaborate, and they did. And we did some share-outs, you know, I think we did three of them. Is that right, Matt? We did three of those last year during our PLC time, and that was exciting. You know, so we're looking at that as a model, and hopefully, we're going to build on that. You know, the one thing that we see happening on a weekly basis is our specialist teachers are meeting as PLCs. So you're seeing all our Fiyette teachers together, all our music teachers together. You know, it's just, it's one of those things that I think is going to snowball in a very positive way.
Other questions or comments? No.
Good report. Thank you very much. Sure gives off to a good start at an early age. Thank you.
You bet.
I just had a couple of quick questions. So the other two elementary buildings that presented prior to you also talked very highly of Move Five and how that was really a great program. This is the, this past school year was the second year of that program?
It was the first year.
The first year, okay. So then do we know this STRIVE foundation, how far the funding goes out for that?
Not yet.
Okay.
As far as I'm aware. Matt, do you know anything more about that?
It's the standard kind of piece where there's a couple of years with the opportunity for renewal.
Okay. Which usually is bodes well for us, because we do get the kind of.
All we have to do is say Zach Pruitt is in charge of the grant, and you know what we mean, yes.
Very true.
Okay, excellent. And then my other question about collaborative classroom, and again, just a result of you being the last elementary school, noticing that they're presenting some different reading assessments, but knowing the, you know, the overall collaborative classroom and the consistency across the district. Is there then, within individual buildings, unique reading assessments that occur? Are they all a part of collaborative classroom?
No, we have aligned all of that, actually. And we spent considerable time, and I say we, the principals, Matt, Mary, Hope, we spent considerable time on essentially weeding the garden. spent considerable time on essentially weeding the garden. And, you know, we kept hearing for years, and rightfully so, that plates are full. And when we looked at this situation last year, Matt was very instrumental in saying, you know what, we're going to, we're going to take all these other things away. And he explained it more from a perspective of, if we need to add something back, we can look at it more of, as like a reverse pilot. Where if, if we find that we're needing something, you know, we can add it back down the road, but we're going to have some discussion about it, too. So what we're doing and what you're going to see moving into this next school year is a ton of consistency.
Excellent. That's really great. Yeah, we're super excited to hear, and it's just, we've heard such positive feedbacks, feedback from Mary Grace Hansen and, and building administrators and teachers, and everyone feeling really good about it. And it's going to be super exciting a year from now to be sitting here and hearing of that. But we'd be remiss in not congratulating you pre-embargo of, or release of embargoed MCA scores, but it sounds like it's a real win, so thank you, because that does not come without a, a lot of dedication and commitment and a ton of work by everybody in the building, so thank you.
Sure, I will pass that on.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, good. Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Just tell me.
There's just two things I want to point out.
Yes, please.
That I just can't let go because it's too awesome. When Scott talked about the everyday math rearrangement, we cannot undervalue what happened there. So we know a year ago, Sibley had some real concerns about the performance of their students at a grade level where they typically had been very high performing, but they had done something new, and they realized, they looked at the data, they looked at their instruction, they made inferences from that study, they did something intentionally, and got an incredible outcome. That's the definition of what we want a PLC to do. And that's where that work happened.
Right.
So when you take that power of professional learning community, you provide data, you provide insight from the people who are teaching it, you have someone like Hope who is coming in and being able to help look at those things, it's exactly how it is supposed to work. And what you're going to see is some, I think, there are some pretty good results this year from that. And so we just can't undervalue that enough. It's exactly what we need to do, and we don't do it often enough. You're also going to hear about some of that same kind of thing when Greg talks about eighth grade science, some other areas. So when we think about professional learning communities, that's, that's the poster child for exactly what is supposed to happen. What does the data tell us? What do we need to do to change our instruction so we get better outcomes for kids? So I just can't emphasize that enough. And I have to tell you, I am giddy about, think about a district-wide math goal. Think about that for a minute. Unheard of. Have we ever had a single goal across the district, the elementaries, ever?
No.
And so the fact that we're not using a standardized, we are using a curriculum-based assessment, that we are recording on a, we're aggregating on a district basis, and if past performance predicts future success, I imagine that math teachers, not just at one building, but across the district, are going to start looking at those curriculum-based chapter assessments or unit assessments and say, hey, you guys did really well on this one. What did you do? And really, you know, getting to that continuous improvement mindset, that not being, well, geez, we didn't do as well as this other building, no matter who it is, that's exactly the kind of academic culture we want. And I could not be more thrilled, you know, with the work of our elementary principals, and Mary Grace Hansen, and Hope Langston, and the instructional coaches coming together, because this is a big deal. People, teachers are becoming vulnerable by, and we're aggregating the data, so, you know, we're not saying we're looking at it necessarily directly by classroom quite yet. We are, but it's not something we're publishing because it's for internal use. But what great work by our folks to learn from each other. So we have long wanted this consistency, and so Scott, you're the elementary principal here tonight, I just am, I could not be more pleased. So thank you for all of your efforts to break down the silos between buildings and really moving ahead in a very positive direction, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so with that excellent report, we head into what we know will be another excellent report, and that is Greg Chellino, Principal of Northfield Middle School. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Good evening, and glad to be here. It's always fun to come speak to all of you. I have to admit that, I was telling Scott before we started, that Dr. Hillman, you can mark me down for going first next year. That's kind of where I like to go is right away. But due to my son getting married and the first one being like the day before, a couple days before his wedding, I opted to go later.
First in July, not first at tonight's meeting.
No, first of July.
Yes.
So I would like to go back to that spot.
You got it. There's not usually a line for that many of your spots.
No. So I kind of jump at it, so I apologize. I'm a little tired, since I don't have the sea legs back, so to speak, after a full day of questions and greeting people and stuff. But it was fun. So to echo, I mean, this morning was a fabulous start, a lot of good comments, a lot of, it's fun to see everyone connecting and, and digging into it at the middle school, getting the rooms ready for parent meeting and stuff. But this evening, I'm here to talk about our site improvement plan. And with any site improvement plan, it kind of goes along with the theme here, it's about, a lot of it has to do with reflecting. And reflecting on what happens in the past is how we make progress in the future. And I'll kind of add to that is, at the middle school, part of my welcome back presentation to staff was exactly that. And I took it a little bit farther by just saying reflection plus analyzing your data plus actually doing something about it is how we make progress, or learning and progress. And so we chatted about that this morning at the middle school, and that's kind of a culture that I want to bring. We've kind of done that in some areas, and as you see, and I'll talk about a little bit later, there's some areas that I, that, goals for myself, that I'd like to get some other curriculum areas that maybe aren't tested on that same mindset. So we're going to work on it. But first, let's take a quick look at our, our goals from last year. And the two achievement goals we had, the first one of wanting to move, increase five percent of all of our students in all three grades, show positive growth on their MCA, reading a math test during the seventeen, eighteen school year. And then the next one is really working on our gap with our FRP students. And again, as Scott said, unfortunately, scores are embargoed for a little bit longer, so I can't give you exact numbers, but I can say that we've made some significant growth for the second year in a row, and I'm really excited about that, and so is our staff, when we talked about it today. Some things, I know Dr. Hillman mentioned science. Science is not part of our goal, we had a lot of discussion with that, but I will say that the science folks, true to the reflecting and analyzing data, and then making a difference in the end, doing something different. Our eighth grade science teachers, Tany McDonna and Craig Crewn, they had been struggling to try getting a good, solid increase or improvement on their students for many years. So they did something different. They thought outside the box, and they interviewed our elementary staff. And they asked them about science, and they said, hey, no blame, no shame, nothing, we just want to know what you're teaching at the elementaries in all three schools, so that we can look and see where are the holes that we have to plug. And it was very interesting data that came back. It was really clear, and the elementaries got the information, how everyone replied. But they took that and they realized, I'll pick on astronomy, there were some other topics, but astronomy was one that really stuck out to them, that they would make an assumption that the students were getting some information about astronomy that they just weren't getting. And so they really flipped around when they taught certain topics, and then they spent a little more time on others. And when the results come out, it is quite amazing, the jump that they made between what they've been doing in the past to what they did this year. And so we're excited to share that, but I guess you have to wait. But to look at math and reading, we again, somewhere not as extreme of a increase as it was in science, but we did make some more significant progress going in a, a positive direction, which, like I said, we are excited about. There are two populations, like anything, when you look at, when you want both sides of the coin. So also looking at the data, our EL students and our special ed students, we want to take a little closer look at that. They're not at a spot where I think we're comfortable saying, hey, we're going in the right direction, but we would like to just really take this year to really unpack that and say, okay, what's going on with those two populations? And see if we can, the what's next of things, as Dr. Hillman would say, to see if we can get the needle. I preach to our staff, is let's just make the needle move. And needle move doesn't always necessarily mean the positive, we hope for that, but move it somewhere. Staying flat is just, that's what I call this today, being comfortable. We want to be a little bit uncomfortable, so let's do something to see if we can get that needle to move. And then we also had two climate goals. The first one, even though these, this is kind of year two of, or coming up will be year two of three, I may sunset the first one. It has to do with really building community. It's not that that's not important, but I really think we have a good handle on that. I listed a few of the things that we do, from courage retreat to our mental health awareness, to dances, to web events, to the Fun Fest. The sixth grade gender meetings, that was fun. Mr. O'Keefe and I, we split up with our student support, Corey Yamri and Jenny Streiflin and Rachel Hudson and Heather Stanton Imes, and they took all the sixth grade girls, and Mr. O'Keefe and I took all the boys. And we had a chat about pride and what that meant as a sixth grader, specific to their gender. So it was a little different conversation, and we, we thought, hey, let's do something different, let's see if we can have an effect. I didn't give a survey with that, but I can tell you that coming out of that, the feedback from the sixth grade teachers, what they saw as a difference, they thought it was well worthwhile, so we'll continue to do that again this year. So that was a great thing. The second goal was, had to do with just transitions, and we will, we will continue that goal moving forward. And it's really, we want to improve our fifth to six, six to seven, seven to eight, and then eight to nine. So in the past, we've worked on, we've kind of looked at both ends, the fifth coming to six and the eighth going to nine, but we want to also do the transitions within our own building as well. And that was something that we started at some staff meetings last year. We kind of mapped out some areas that we can focus on to kind of have some common themes across all three grades. An example of that would be doing things a little bit more similar on Schoology to help parents and help students as they go from grade to grade. So that will stay in. And I think we've done a nice job. And the survey that I did send out, you can see that eighty-three percent of the families felt their student did have a smooth transition, as well as eighty-three percent of the families felt their students were well-prepared. And then the bottom one, eighty-five percent on both students feeling connected and also feeling that the middle school had school spirit. So the numbers are great, I would love them to be higher, so that's going to be our goal moving forward. Key reflections for this past year. Reading Plus. Reading Plus is making a difference. Reading Plus, just a reminder, is an online resource we use for reading. It's, we tried a couple different ones, but then last year, we kind of settled on Reading Plus, and we really liked the results that we, we received, actually two years ago. Last year, two years ago, it was in sixth grade, and we didn't do all sixth grade, we kind of did a little, our own little sample size, where we had half the sixth grade doing it for the last couple of years. But last year, then we, we threw in all of seventh grade that did Reading Plus. And the results, as you'll see in a few days, were quite staggering, quite impressive. And even looking, digging deep, or diving deep into the data, looking at our FRP students, our EL students, our special ed students, you really, you could really see a clear picture that it's, is making a difference. So we'll talk about new for this coming year, well, it's on there, I guess. Students and families at NMS, are, they just like being there. I, I can't tell you the number of times I get families, especially new families, coming into our building, which we have a lot. I, I like asking what the students and their parents throughout the year is, hey, how's it going? How's the transition? And quite often, unsolicited, I get responses saying they just love the welcoming atmosphere and just the culture in general. And that's something we're proud of, and we are, we'll keep, keep it going. But we also have to recognize that our student population's changing. And that was another topic of discussion with the staff today, is that we're, we're hovering around that thousand mark, which is more students at the middle school than we've ever had. And the students we're getting, we're getting more and more students that are moving into our district. And there's a big difference between the students that have gone through the Northfield Public School system and students that come to us from somewhere else. It's not good, bad, or indifferent, it's just, it's just a fact. So we have to just realize that, recognize it, and what may have worked a few years ago may not work because we have a different population this year. And that's something that, as a staff, we want to recognize, acknowledge, and then make sure we're making decisions, keeping that in mind. We also need to keep asking the question, what's next? So it's great that we're doing well, we're proud of what we're doing, but it's a stepping stone. So we want to keep, it's, today's presentation I used to raising the bar, and we want to just keep raising that bar. So as we look at next year, as I said, last year was year one, this is year two of three, so the goals will remain the same moving forward. But some strategies we're going to use is that sixth grade students, all sixth grade students this year now will use the Reading Plus program. So instead of our own little subgroup, we have one team using it, one team not, now both sixth grade teams will use Reading Plus. I should preface that by saying, the team that didn't use Reading Plus, those students did very well as well, but the students that were doing Reading Plus were noticeably even higher yet. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that. I do want to work with subjects that are not tested on MCAs, I kind of alluded to that, looking at our elective classes, our PE classes, and our foreign languages, and see what can we do to get them a little bit more connected to our building goals, specifically those achievement goals. As well as, we want to analyze the data and for possible changes moving forward with our EL and special ed instruction. And then the final two, have to do more of the climate, and that's, we want to re-energize the Pride program. It's going well, things are going well, the kids like it, they really understand what pride means. But like any program, once you start it, every so many, every so often, you have to give it a big shot of adrenaline to re-energize it. We have eight new licensed teaching staff this year, so over the years, we have people that didn't start when we did with the program, so it was time. So we'll be doing that this year as well with the adults in the building. And then finally, similar to the high school, ours will look a little bit different, but we do want to explore a building-wide flex program in the middle of our day. It will not be like the high school, I kind of, that would keep me up at night, having middle schoolers having that, that much freedom. But we would like to, we are going to explore, we did a little bit last year, and we have a committee, a good group of people together that want to go, you know, visit some other places and really research and see what can, what can that look like at the middle school to help our students during the day. Are we going to look at this at the end to see if we've made progress at all? Is there standard? And there's, there's three, two surveys, and then the teacher reflections. So I quite often at my staff meetings, I interview, or not interview, I survey our staff to get feedback from them. I think that's a part, part of my staff meetings, that's how we get ideas and how we know how to move forward. So that'll continue, as well as our parent feedback and student climate surveys that we give, and then naturally our MCAs and our math testing data. So that in general is kind of what the plan is for the middle school moving forward. We're excited about this school year, we're excited about where we've come from and the progress we've made, but I'm probably most excited to see where we're headed. Questions?
Oh my gosh, excellent. You do have a lot to be proud of. So questions, comments, board members have? Margaret?
Excellent report.
Well, thank you.
I'm always, I'm always impressed. I like working with middle school's kids, and I like other people who like working with them, because there aren't a lot of people who really enjoy middle schoolers. So, and, and, you know, you guys have those same number of plates to juggle, but also that virgin teenage mind to deal with at the same time. So I'm always impressed. I know open enrollment affects the high school often. Are we really starting to see that open enrollment is affecting the middle school in the same way?
I don't have the data in front of me, but I would say our open enrollment, as well as just people moving either back to the community.
Okay.
Or you also have to realize that Prairie Creek, they start coming back to us, St. Dominic's, they start coming back to the middle school. So we have a few different avenues that affect the middle school. But I will say our open enrollment, as well as just general enrollment, people moving back, seems to be going well.
Okay. And then I had another question. Oh, yes, pardon my ignorance or my forgetfulness, but remind me what the acronym PRIDE stands for.
He is being prepared. P is being prepared. R is respect. I is integrity. D is dependability. And E is excellence.
Okay, thank you.
And we say, by the way, that goes for adults as well as students. So that's another big culture push that we have at the middle school.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great report.
Well, thank you.
Other questions, comments? No?
Margaret asked a couple of questions that I was going to ask, but one for you is, where is the first bind going to be in capacity?
I'm sorry, the first bind?
Where is the bind going to be? For example, media, food service, classrooms?
I would say classroom is going to be the number one, but thanks to all of you for helping us out with class sizes and stuff. I mean, it's not a permanent fix like our long-term and our ongoing priorities would state, you know, we want something more permanent with an increased enrollment, but it's been nice and it's really been helpful to know that we can count on when our numbers do get up there, that we have some options to help us out. Specifically in the classroom, I'm going to, I'll say sixth grade. Sixth grade is a challenge because of the way it's structured, trying to affect class size or lower class size when you have two teams, five teachers on each team. It's not like in seventh and eighth grade where I can kind of spread out and FTE someplace. It doesn't work that way in sixth grade, they don't have the electives. They have very few, I should say, one hour of their day. So the only way which we did this year is to have one person teach multiple subjects, which is a very difficult and not a sustainable solution to help with class sizes.
Good report. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Seth?
Nice report. I was also going to mention, are your middle school enrollment numbers in the last three or five years pretty consistent, or what trends are there?
We're definitely trending up. I know when I started as principal, I believe we were just a little bit over 900, maybe the 920 mark, and now to be pushing over 1,000, you can kind of do the math as it's been going up. It's roughly been about 20 to 30 more students a year.
Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So I was curious about the career readiness piece.
Yes.
And if you can tell us a little bit more about how that's going.
Sure. We have our big CTE day that everyone loves, and we'll continue to do that. But to ramp up the readiness, the curriculum that we've implemented that go in our seventh and eighth grade health classes, and then our Jenny and Corey, our guidance counselors go into the sixth grade health classes as well to do some lessons. And it's really talking about kind of laying the framework for careers moving forward for students. My ultimate goal, it's not a goal that's on here, but my own personal goal, and Mr. O'Keefe and I have talked about this as well, is we'd like to get to a place where every one of our subjects actually do something with careers, either bring a speaker in or talk about careers in their field at least once a quarter. So that's really looking forward, and I've conveyed this to our staff a couple different times, that that's the direction we'd like to go. The important thing is exposure. So I think we're doing a decent job, I guess, that first level of working on the careers and college readiness, and what other path, whatever path students want to take, is really that exposure piece, as well as just starting the conversation, because that's probably half the battle of the middle school. And when they get to eighth grade, they can start maybe honing in, maybe a little bit more on the direction they're going in.
I appreciate that you're already thinking about what's next.
Yeah.
Amy?
So this question is because you come last, right after the elementary school. So the elementary schools have this positive reinforcement for Yay's to Every Day, and I remember back a few years ago, the middle school was working on reducing the number of reprimands.
Referrals, office referrals.
So I'm just wondering, sort of, I love what you're doing on the larger scale level, but what are you doing on individual level as far as the climate for the individual students? Do you have that sort of program?
Well, our pride program, which is part of PDIS, kind of works on both. So it's really teaching the students about pride and what it means. So as you walk around, we have to redo our signs now because they're starting to get a little bit old, but if you walk around the middle school, there are different things that's called, they're called basics, which is part of the pride program. So there's a cafeteria basics, just kind of lists, here's the expectations that are in here. In addition to that, we do drawings about every other week. The students can earn, individual students then can earn these pride tickets. So they get the pride tickets, they put them in a bin, and then we draw them. So we're recognizing students for doing good stuff. At our assemblies, we draw random names, we keep all of them. So even after we do drawings, we have this big bin, and we'll draw them, and we give right, and recognize students that way as well. So it's really about recognizing students for doing the right thing, which then in turn, it causes your office referrals or students not being able to stay in class to be decreased. And I joke with new staff when they come in from other places, that I say, well, a bad month for us is like five referrals in an area. And the other, I mean, that's terrible for us. Normally it's like one. So it gets a little, actually comical, but a little bit of a challenge too, to kind of say, okay, what's next, because our numbers are so low to begin with. So to answer your question, really, the individual piece of that is really calling out students individually for what they're doing right, and then we have that recognition system that's attached to it. I will add to that, one of the things that we, I'd say we haven't done as good of a job with is getting the terminology of pride into the classroom. I talk about it, and so does Michael O'Keefe as well, with our staff on a regular basis. It's not that they're not encouraging our students, but it's that mind shift to change the language so it matches what the building's doing. And it's, that just takes a, really a concerted effort to remind yourself to do that. So that is part of the reboot, is now, is to hopefully get that into the classroom more.
Great. Now that answered things really well.
Okay, good.
I do have another question too, and I don't like dwelling on negative, but you have 87% of the parents and families said things go well. I'm just curious what some of the feedback is from the 13% who said things didn't go smoothly.
Some of it had to do with, it was tied to students, it was hard to disseminate a little bit on, okay, were their students not prepared? The largeness of the building was one, some of them I could tell, some of them just kind of spelled it out, that they came from one of the smaller charter schools like Prairie Creek. When they came, that wasn't a large portion, but a few of them came from there. Some of them, it just, the overwhelmingness of the homework kicks in, rotating between classes, there's kind of a variety. So there's some things that, with our web program, we're hoping that that alleviates some of that, but it's really the intentional part on us adults, specifically in our student support, of really kind of reaching out to families in fifth grade before they get to us to kind of maybe do some educating, that we think hopefully then will help some of those numbers as well.
Great. Thank you for the very good presentation.
You're welcome.
Seth?
I know we're getting better at that, but as far as casting seeds and planting seeds based on what Ellen's talking about with career days and career ideas, and I know from what I've learned and heard before, is that middle school is a time to kind of show and expose kids to, I would say twofold in a sense, you know, what industries, what things are there that are out there, and then maybe the other part that I like us to cultivate is, hey, what are you good at? And then, you know, so where have we gone from that to where we kind of want to be? And even as far as the futurist kind of thing, what do you see as industries that might be out there that aren't even created yet? I was the first wireless rep in Minnesota, and there wasn't even cell phones when I was in high school. So, I mean, that's kind of the emerging thing in technologies, and I know a lot of it's government, you know, healthcare, education, you know, what do you see and how do we, you know, middle school's kind of, what is our track, how we start cultivating and planting the seeds in middle school, you know, getting them with careers and more focus as they move through the system.
And that is, that's definitely a challenge. I mean, there's a lot of the, just think about the number of jobs that weren't around even like eight years ago. So a lot of our sixth graders coming in are going to have access to careers by the time they graduate from college or trade school, or whatever they choose to do when they graduate from high school, that maybe haven't even been defined yet. So that is, I, it is a challenge. I mean, that's why I personally think if I can get all of our subject areas, whether it be our fax class, to our client class, to a foreign language, that can bring in a speaker or talk about careers once a quarter, or different options that are out there that students maybe have never heard about, to at least get it in the back of their head as, hey, I really, I really like German, you know, what could I do with German as maybe something moving forward when I graduate? So to me, I think that's, that is going to be a key piece with our ramp up the readiness in addition to the curriculum, and I, I'm kind of excited to see it.
If you identify and identify those skill sets that they've got to match that with what their future is, and say, hey, if somebody just says, you're really good at that, wow, you should look at that, and here's one thing, you're looking, all your friends are telling you're good at that, and then you start taking interest in that, studying a little bit, and they've got a smartphone that's really smart in front of them, they can look up things and just really become good at a number of things, but you know, we want to be focused and think long-term, that, you know, you don't want to be living in your dad's basement, parents' basement forever, and you want to get out. That's not a bad place, they want to pay the rent, too.
Excellent. So I just had a couple of questions. So I believe the last time you were here, you were talking about the sixth grade math progression?
Yes.
And so you, at that point, were just sort of introducing that to parents in the fifth grade teachers in the elementary buildings, and certainly you're moving, this is the first year.
First year.
But how did sort of that whole process go in terms of transitioning staff and teachers from the elementary school and students that were made aware that, oh gee, now I don't have to really worry and wonder about my math class, so maybe just give us a little bit of background on how that all sort of came together after you left this class?
Sure. So after informing the parents what we're going to do, and when I was able to sit down with the parents and explain them, both at fifth grade parent night, and then I spoke at Bridgewater, I do that historically, and Greenville and Sibley is next on my list to kind of hit Scott and Sam up as well, so I can make the rounds, kind of do my elementary tour. But it was nice to talk to the parents and explain to them, one, why we're doing this, and how this is going to benefit all of our students. And I have to be honest, I, knock on anything wood, I have not had a single person tell me they're concerned.
Excellent. Well, it spoke so well to some of the concerns around maybe some of the feedback you're getting, transitions and the hard work that you're doing trying to make those transitions, and you're really getting, seeing really good results in maybe some of the areas, you know, that you identified as stress points. And I had talked to a couple of sixth graders, no, they were in seventh grade at the time, after your presentation, and talked about how, you know, the idea of moving forward with the new sixth grade math concept, and, oh, that would be great. That, you know, they do, they just feel so much pressure and stress, and you just talked about all the dynamics around that whole thing, so to see you just remove that and put everyone, so it's going to be really exciting next year too, to hear, to hear about that. And then to Ellen's question about ramp up to readiness, so has the overall then reaction, what I'm sensing and hearing from you is that the teachers have been pretty satisfied with the curriculum? Does the University of Minnesota provide updates to the curriculum? Are there as a resource for working through the curriculum with questions after the first year? How has that come together?
It'll be interesting. I think Matt touched on, we're really good at first years, so I'm really pleased with how well we kind of rolled this out this next year, so we'll be interested in seeing looking forward. I do believe they do updates with the ramp up to readiness program. I can say, they did a lot with ramp up to readiness, but given SCL and ramp up, I think we did more on the SCL side than the ramp up. Partially, I think the SCL curriculum, for lack of a better way of putting it, kind of melded into our curriculum maybe a little bit easier than the ramp up, that's kind of its own little, kind of offshoot unit, so to speak. So I guess it's going to be tough to answer your question. I think after this, after this year, I think we will be able to answer that, on how we're doing, and were the updates effective and stuff. I'd like to get two years under to see.
Absolutely.
Yep, I think we're on the right page, or no, maybe we should start looking at something else.
Yeah, sure. I mean, after year one, it's really hard to really have any sort of sense of, but I was just curious where you thought, and after year one, your response is perfect.
Yeah.
That's where I would expect, so. Excellent. Well, and so now we can give you the, I guess, we'll, each year that you're here, we'll give you the belated congratulations on the previous year MCA scores.
That's about it.
They were phenomenal, and Ellen and I and Dr. Hillman were at the World's Best Workforce presentation when Hope Langston presented that in January, actually, and just was excited. And there was a lot of community members there that have a lot at stake in, you know, seeing that all of our students be successful. So it was really great to be able to show those results in such a public way, which we know we will be able to do, but.
Later this week, yes. At least at the state fair, we can.
So belated congratulations, and again, as I had said to Scott Santa, that does not come out without a whole lot of work from everyone, so thank you. And belated congratulations, and I guess early congratulations for this year, and thank you for the great report. Ellen?
So I have a follow-up, and it's not to Greg, but more to Dr. Hillman, and it's dovetailing what Julie was just saying, so yes, absolute congratulations. But I'm looking at how Julie has your last year's report with the big blackout, and then this year, this embargo. Can you explain to us what concerns me? It's one, it's frustrating as school board members to be able to ask the questions we want to ask, you know, it's really frustrating. Do the teachers at least get to work with it? I mean, what does this embargo mean, that we're the same?
That's a great question.
So the data is embargoed to the public until August 30th. And so I think the key thing is that it can be used internally, you know, with folks internally who have a need to know about it. We could actually, as a school board, hold a closed session where I could share the data with you, which, and I want to just be very clear, the Department of Education, I think, is functioning at the highest level in the 23 years I've been a public educator. They're doing some things really, really well. There's a huge change this year to the Every Student Succeeds Act. And what is frustrating to the department as well as us, they've been very clear that there are some decisions that they have had to make, that they wish they could make different decisions on, but in order to comply with some of the federal components, they needed to do, and the timeline, unfortunately, I don't actually even know why the feds are worried about that, but the timeline for release, they have the preliminary data available virtually instantaneously after the tests are completed, because all of the assessment is now completed online, or most of it is. I mean, we have a few students who may take paper pencil based on a circumstance. I think after the, I have lodged my complaint loud and clear to them. I've talked with Greg Keith from the Department of Ed, the chief academic officer, great person, and we've worked with him on a number of things, and he's clearly said we're not the only people to complain, because the preliminary, what I think they need to study is how much do the final results change from the preliminary? Because there is a window of time where we, because they do make mistakes, where we can go in and we can say, well, wait a minute, this one doesn't look quite right, and there's a process to go through that. What my hope is, is that as we have some concrete evidence of the validity of the preliminary results, that we will be able to see that timeline tighten up. I also have to be straightforward with you, that I, you cannot underestimate the power of the state fair, and I'm not joking, it sounds like a joke, but it's not, because the state likes to release some of these things at these high-impact times. And we know for more than a decade, there have been times, remember the old accountability on a stick, where they, you know, hopefully we're not going back to that, right? But they do like to release these things at this point. We have been able to use the data this summer to start setting our pieces, which has been really great, to setting our trajectory for the school improvement plans for the coming year. And I'll be straight with you, that we are really trying to actually get away from using the MCA results as our indicators. What we want is, we want the indicators that we're using in our school improvement plans to be ones that accurately predict, that where we don't have to worry about how the MCA's are going to come out, because if we have our own internal assessments that are a mix of things that are nationally-normed criteria and then under-stabilized assessments, along with the curriculum-based measurements, like we mentioned during the elementary presentation, what we want to do is, we want to have indicators that we don't have to wait for a year for. We want to have these indicators that we can use in this ongoing basis, the shorter cycle goal, so we can fail faster, find out what's working and what's not working, and that we know by having some predictive power, that the MCA results will take care of themselves. My goal would be, we never see a goal with the MCA again, because we're not worried about it, because we know that our internal predictive measures forecast how it's going to be. The MCA is a powerful assessment, but we have to go back to remember what it was for. The original MCA's were designed to measure curriculum implementation just before No Child Left Behind came out. Then they were modified and they were adapted to meet the requirements of that federal law. And so while I do think that the MCA does have a powerful source of information for us. us, it is one piece of information. It is unfortunately the information that gets shared with everybody and their, you know, brother and sister and cousin on a variety of websites. Our goal would be to be that it's the least of our worries. So we're not focused on that, because we know if we focus on these results, that the MCA results will come, because we can make that link. One of the things that I think is important, now that I can talk about this, which is, I just want to compliment Greg on their, their complete, and it's just the complete commitment to continuous improvement. We've seen that at the middle school, and as soon as we saw that happen, we have immediately seen results, which is really phenomenal. One of the things that we want with our standardized assessments, they are a part of our data, right? They're an important part, but they are not the entirety of our data. So we want those, those assessments that we do with all children, those macro takes, if you will, to be as transparent as they possibly can. In the old days, everybody knew when testing happened, right? Because there's boxes piled to the ceiling in Greg's office. He used to be the assessment coordinator. We knew when testing was happening, right? Because everybody had the sharpened number-two pencils, and then it became, we knew that testing was happening, because no one could use the computer lab for like two months, right? Well, last year, the middle school piloted testing both MCA and MAP on iPads. And what's beautiful about that is students stay in their same room. They're in the same room where they are learning the content. They're in the natural environment. It's not a specialized event where we've got to all march down to the computer lab. It is very natural. And so you think about the pressure that that takes off of kids, that I just walk in, I fire up the assessment, I'm able to take it, and if I've gone early, I've got my book, I'm not wasting time, you know, with this transition. That kind of thing, as we keep going forward, is going to give us better assessment results. And so I really applaud Greg for using that strategy, because we had some concern, our network people were really looking behind the scenes, they were very excited to see how much can we actually do? And hands down, it was the best testing experience we've ever had.
Absolutely.
Probably spent the least amount of time testing. Is that fair to say?
That is true.
No tran, you think all about those good things, right? And that goes to this whole thing that as we move forward, I really do believe that the state will get to the point where we should have access to those results and be able to report them much earlier, because the technology is coming so far. And that's really important, because the results need to be usable. So while we can't report them to you, we have been using them internally here. I apologize for the additional soapbox, but I think it's, it all works together, that assessment, our check-ins of where students are, are so important. The thought of, the thought of waiting a year for that, setting our goals and say, all right, let's wait till the end of next year, see how we did. That's what keeps me up at night, you know? I mean, how do you really know what your instruction is, the impact it's having, if we're not doing these shorter-cycle goals? We've made some great strides, Greg and the middle school staff have been exemplary in modeling that continuous improvement mindset. Now we just need to get the other systems outside of us to catch up a little bit, if you will.
And part of that is, is to piggyback, is we are actually, tomorrow, our staff, they don't know yet, you can be here first, they're going to take what Hope and I kind of deemed the wins, the kids that moved, that Nita moved up, and then we're going to ask our staff to go through, and this is last year's data, so the students had last year. So before they get the new students in a brain, we want to look at, what's the story behind student X? Why did they go from partially meets to exceed, or why did they go from partially meets to meets? And ask all curricular areas, go through all these students, what did you do? Well, hey, I stayed in contact with this parent, you know, once a week, or whatever, I had them. So we can really get that set, other information. We're using the MCA data, but we're using it then to say, okay, what other factors were in there that contributed to the success?
Isn't that phenomenal? And that's happening at our elementaries as well.
Yep.
Excellent.
Student by student. Now, if that's not, I mean, that is exactly where we want to be in. It's been a long journey, but it's a, it's a, it's just the culmination of a number of things coming together. And this is the first time we've done this.
Correct.
And we are excited, you know, we of course never would share individual student, but we're excited to share with you the processes we move forward. And I can, you can expect to hear more about that when Hope Langston gives our annual assessment report in September.
Excellent. What's really phenomenal, Greg, is it's 8:15 PM, you hosted 400 people in your building this morning for a 7:00 AM breakfast, and you are no doubt exhausted. So thank you for a very long day, for a great report. Now you can leave.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Is Sonus getting married? Did I hear?
Got married.
Got married. Got married.
My oldest daughter is getting married, and that's...
No, your children are in junior high. Because that's where they are in my mind, so.
Don't tell my 20-year-old who's a junior in college.
Thank you, Greg. Good night. Okay, so our last item for discussion and report is, Dr. Hillman has his proposed superintendent goal for 2018-19, which we will discuss and open for questions and comments, and then we will approve as an item for individual action at our next board meeting. So, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I prepared about 45 minutes. I'm just joking. These are the jokes, folks, so. So I have four goals that after conferencing with Chair Pritchard, that I am submitting to you for your consideration for this year. The first is, since your decision to bring forward a bond referendum for our elementary school projects on November 6, 2018, what I really believe is important is that the district, of course, complete all the required components to administer that election. So that is a goal, because as you know, while we will have a broader group of people presenting and helping with that referendum information this year, it is still ultimately my responsibility to make sure that those things happen. So I, I think that's an appropriate goal. The second goal is around consistent literacy curriculum. I couldn't have had a better commercial for it this evening, but it's very important. So the district will implement a consistent literacy curriculum collaborative classroom, as evidenced by district-wide data collection of selected curriculum-based assessment and two teacher satisfaction surveys. And then I will draft a reflection for the board based on that data. Because it's an implementation, what I want to be able to do is have some artifacts that I can collect to prove to you that we are actually doing what we said we were going to do. The third goal is, again, I've mentioned before, we are outstanding at first-year implementations. But then at the end of the first year, we tend to say, yeah, we did that already, and this is an area of growth for us as a district, to make sure that we institutionalize some of the change that we have worked so hard to make. We just can't be the flavor of the day, right? What's next does not mean, what's the next FAD that we can do? We're looking for research-based and data-driven decisions that we know make a difference for the human beings that are entrusted to us every day. And we know that the social-emotional curriculum Second Step has been a large success last year, so we will emphasize continued successful implementation of the Second Step curriculum, as evidenced by the district-wide data collection of the social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener, otherwise known as SABR's, in grades K through 4, and the Second Step curriculum-based screener for grades 5 through 8, and two teacher satisfaction surveys. Again, I will draft a reflection for you based upon the data. Again, similar, collecting objective data so that we can share with you that we have implemented the curriculum, and that we are looking at the results moving forward, because it's not just about saying we did it, it's about how did we do with it, if that makes sense? The fourth goal is really around our adoption, our move toward a very systemized approach to continuous improvement. And so as you know, we had received a grant through Northfield Promise that substantially paid for what I'll call an organizational coaching contract with Suter Education, to really help us cement what, what does continuous improvement look like in our district, and what are the specific tactics and strategies that we use to make sure that we are committed and on track in this continuous improvement journey? And so the way we've written the goal, and I've worked with my, our coach on this, is improve use of stakeholder feedback through implementation of Suter Education, develop district support services, parent satisfaction, and employee engagement surveys, and reporting those results to the corresponding stakeholder groups and the Board of Education by March 30th, 2018. These three different stakeholder groups, there's a specific survey that are, that are used for a specific number of times per year with different audiences. And one of the things that we know is so important, we've heard it from Thought Exchange over and over again, that if we collect the data, we need to share it out with people, right? So that's one of the beauties when we used to use Thought Exchange, because we are moving away from Thought Exchange for a number of different reasons in favor of, of the Suter surveys. Unfortunately, Thought Exchange has gone through a change in their, the way that they implement surveys, that I just, I frankly have told them, I don't think it is worth the district to partner with them anymore in terms of a financial place. You know, I'm a huge supporter of Thought Exchange, but the modification, as we saw in the facilities exchange we did this summer, which we got some great data, but the way that they've modified it is not user-friendly, and we don't think that it reports back to people in the way that we used to. But the important thing is that we get data, we need to make sure we share it with the people who we ask for, to, to, we, we share it with the people who we surveyed, and then we make it very clear about what changes are we making in the organization to be able to take advantage of that. And so the results roll out as a very specific tactic that we will be taught in terms of how to do that in a transparent way, again, that is not from a gotcha perspective, but an honest, a very honest reflection, and then setting very measurable goals, numeric, measurable goals about how are we going to get better in these areas? Because we know we need great employees, they're a huge important piece of it. Our parents are so important in terms of making sure that they have confidence in the work that we do. And then our, our district support services at the district level, we're going to start measuring, how do the schools feel that we are serving them? I think you're going to love this stuff, frankly. We're in love with it already, it has just been fantastic. It aligns with our vision, it's going to be outstanding. So this is the first step. I envision additional goals based upon this in future years, but this is the one for this year. And then, of course, we also know that we have a strategic plan, near-term and ongoing priorities that we are always going after, but these are the specific superintendent goals that I am proposing for the 2018-19 school year.
Excellent, thank you. Questions or comments for board members? Margaret? Goal number four?
Yes.
Shouldn't that read that you will present to us by March 30th, 2019?
Yes, thank you. Yep, we've already, I, I'm so advanced, I already did it. No, just kidding.
I was going to say congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that typo.
Okay, other questions are coming. Ellen?
So I really like these goals. I like the, the fourth one, because it's talking about using the feedback right away. So I think it's just outstanding to think about, thinking about the what's next in terms of Thought Exchange, now thinking about how, and not just that we're going to do it, but that we're going to use it. Then I had a kind of a question on two and three, which are, you talked about the, using the selected curriculum-based assessments to measure this sort of consistent, consistency, and then the third one, using SABR and the Second Step curriculum-based screener. And my question is, I kind of see the district, the superintendent's goals sort of being on the sort of cutting edge for the district and kind of leading the way. Could we envision that we might see next year in some of the school improvement plans more use of these sort of measures? Because we haven't really, like, I was thinking about how, I think Sibley had an excellent school site improvement plan that they laid out with this four-to-one ratio, but it wasn't looking at much of the same sort of measures, but maybe thinking about, is this, is that how you're envisioning these sort of goals?
So I think the key thing is that when a goal ends up on this list, what we, what we know is that it's a piece that we're, you know, we're continuing to follow up on during the year. And the goal would be to take it off this list and make it just part of the way that we do business. So I absolutely envision us seeing some, and I think you actually already see it in this year's school improvement plans, with the 80%, you know, of students achieving 80% on the selected math curriculum measures, they're already kind of a year ahead. Had we done the school setting strategy this way a couple of years ago, we may, you may have seen math in this format. So I absolutely believe that these things will filter to the school improvement plans moving forward, because again, one of the things that we just need to keep getting better at is measuring what matters and then sticking with it. Now, that doesn't mean we don't innovate, it doesn't mean that we don't look ahead and say, you know, because again, what's next, for a lot of people, is what's the next FAD? What's the next thing that is popular? Well, we have some good data about the things that we know kids need to be successful. And so until proven otherwise, those are the things that you're going to see in the school improvement plans, and very clear measurement, because we know the predictive power of those measurement results. So yes, the short answer to your question, yes, I do anticipate that.
Excellent. Other questions, comments? This is, this is really excellent, and it's just, you know, it really tells the community where we're headed as a district and what we're doing. So thank you for taking on these goals. And of course, the very first goal that is done in one sentence, there are a number of components, and requires a great deal of work and responsibility to administer a bond referendum. So while that might look, might look easy, it's, or one sentence does not really tell the, tell the whole story of what that will take, and we know that's in a very compressed timeframe, so. Excellent work.
I've got Anita, so we're appreciative.
So if anyone does, giving it some additional thought over the course of the next two weeks, have any questions or comments, they could get to Dr. Hillman with those. Otherwise, we will approve these as item for individual action at our September 10th board meeting.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. So those are our items for discussion and report. We do, on the agenda is committee reports, opportunity for board members to talk about their liaison board, the liaison positions they do with different boards and councils within the district. And of course, with the timing, nothing has started, so we do not have any committee reports. So at this point, we can move on to approval of the consent grouping. There were some personnel items in the table file, as well as a couple of financial pieces. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to items for individual action. We do have two items this evening. The first item, we did present as part of a discussion, overall discussion at our last board meeting, so we're ready for an item for individual action here on the preschool early ventures, kid ventures, handbooks for 2018-19. So is there a motion to approve those handbooks as presented? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approval of these handbooks, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last item for individual action, again, Dr. Hillman giving a background on this item at our previous board meeting, so we are ready to take action. If there is a motion to approve a five-cent increase to the adult lunch meal price to comply with the minimum price required by the Minnesota Department of Education, the new price of adult lunch will be $3.75. Is there a motion? Moved by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Ellen. Questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to items for information, filing for school board. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, the filing for school board closed on Tuesday, August 14th. As you know, we have three positions that are up for election this year, those positions held by Julie Pritchard, by Jeff Quinell, and by Margaret Colangelo. We had three individuals file by the end of the day on August 14th, and those people filing are Jeff Quinell, Julie Pritchard, and Tom Barneyak. And there are three seats that are up for election on November 6th. So we have three candidates for three seats, and we'll move forward with that. I want to thank Anita Ozzy and the folks in our district office, who did really a great job of being available and being ready. There's some training and some other things that have to happen in terms of, to make sure that you're prepared to work with individuals who are interested in being a school board candidate, and our district's office staff did an excellent job in preparation for that.
Okay, excellent. Last item for information is bond referendum update. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, just a few items for your thought this evening. One, I just want to confirm that the review and comment document was submitted to the Department of Education in early August, and we are anticipating that feedback probably sometime in September. As soon as we get that feedback from the department, we will put it on the next regular board agenda. We're required by law to discuss the findings from the review and comment at a public meeting, Can be a board meeting. And so as soon as we receive that, we will be feeling to provide that to you. You know, we did have the, most of the projects that we are doing this year were submitted last year through the review and comment process. Those projects got very high remarks from the department, so we don't anticipate any issue, but we just still have to wait for that feedback. We also want to know that after your action earlier this month, Anita Ozzy worked with county auditors to get the questions on the ballot. We've seen some sample ballots, and it appears that that process is going down the line as it's supposed to, which is great. We are also beginning to start getting the informational campaign together. After some reflection and some discussion, you're going to see some pieces start to go live in the next week or so. We've been really intentional of thinking about the first week of school. I think a lot of people think it's logical that we'd start the information campaign right at the beginning of the school year. However, after talking with a few parents and some other folks, you know, parents aren't worried about this the first week of school. You know, they're worried about their children's backpack and the schedule and getting on the bus. So what we just want people to know is that you're going to really see a ramp up of the information to the community beginning that second week of school, maybe later in the first week. And so we know it's a more compressed timeframe than what we've had in the past, but we have a very aggressive agenda to make sure that people have the information that they need. And so just know that those pieces are going to come out. Just a few things I want to share is that, you know, as we start talking about the bond referendum, this year, we often link it to last November's bond referendum. But we have to take one step back, and we just need to express our complete gratitude to our voters for the approval of the operating levy last year. I think that that, that's the lead that gets buried, right? Because our community has been very generous to make sure that our students and our staff are provided with the resources that they need to make sure that we can keep our great programming going. And so, the fact that we have this operating levy in place for the next decade with an inflationary factor, it's going to help us continue to battle the fact that the state does not, has not given us inflationary increases. And we will be hopeful with the next legislative session, but we will be hopeful, that's how we'll say it. So we're so grateful for that operating levy, and we're so thankful for people being with us and supporting the work that we do every day with students. And so then we come back to what we've looked at with the bond referendum for this November. And really, you know, we always start with the why. So why, you know, why are we doing this? We're doing it because we want every child in our community to have a strong start, and we want every child in our community to attend secure schools. And so when you think about the what then, after we've really looked at the why, that we know that that strong start is so important, and we know students and parents feeling that their children are secure as paramount. As we know, I know the board members have heard it, but just I want to reiterate that the proposal includes a new elementary school on the campus of the current Greenville Park building, just across the parking lot. It also would then repurpose the Greenville Park, the current Greenville Park building into an early childhood center, which we are just salivating over that. We think that's a great location to combine the programming from Longfellow and from the NCRC into one location. We think that that's really important. Think about the alignment of services, think about the wraparound childcare. We can expand our use of state scholarships to make sure that families from lower socioeconomic income brackets are able to have a high-quality pre- preschool, should they choose to do it. We are four-star parent aware, so therefore we have access to the Pathway 1 and Pathway 2 scholarships, which we're really thrilled about. That's great. We know how important early learning is. And then we also know that at Sibley, there'll be a couple of small additions, a new cafeteria and a small music addition. We know that we'd be basically expanding the current media center into the cafeteria, and also some additional classroom space at Bridgewater, a new office on the front of the building, and then recapturing the space in the, where the current office is for the purposes of, again, small group instruction. And all of that will be very helpful in relieving classroom pressure, classroom space pressure at both Bridgewater and Sibley. So I think a couple of things were, and let's just quickly talk about the numbers. It's a $40.975 million bond referendum. For the average home in Northfield, $250,000 home, that would cost them $27 per year, that's in the first year, that $27 would stay stable for about four years and then drop off as the middle school debt is retired. And that, if you do that math out per month, it'd be $2.25 per month in the first year, and then maintaining it at that level for the next several years, you know, for all of that really great value in terms of the work that we're doing. As we've, Noel spends more a day on Mountain, you know, Mountain Dew than...
We can change that. The lowest spends more on coffee.
Okay, yes, we can, you bet. But I think when we think about all of those things, we really, I think it's important for our community to know that we listen to them. You know, we've been listening about facilities and engaging about facilities since 2014, when the master facilities plan started. We did a lot of work with the community and a lot of work with the board to come to what we thought, what we think is a very good plan. You know, then we got a very important piece of data last November, and we proposed a bold visionary approach to address a number of facilities' concerns in the district. And we had many, you know, people just come and say, we think the plan's great, but we just can't get our head around that total number, that $109 million number. So we listened again, we talked with a lot of folks after the bond referendum election last November. We convened the 30-member Facilities Action Team who went through all of the data, they looked at the plan, they determined what they thought was the best next steps for you, that report was given to you. And we really listened, and when we heard, what we really heard loud and clear was, we really think it's important to focus on the elementary projects. Focus on the elementary projects, that's where we think we're going to get a lot of return on investment. And then in addition, tax impact is important. And so working with our financial consultant, Ellers, you know, we were able to devise a, structure the bond in such a way where we can make it for a very minimal impact tax fares. And so we listened to the community, and we think that's really important. This entire proposal is a result of that. We also know that that focus on early learning is so critical. In fact, the latest research from Art Rolnik, who's, you know, he's a former vice president of the Minneapolis Federal Reserve, the return on investment on high-quality preschool education, every dollar that you spend, there's a $17 return to society. He says that focusing on early learning is the best economic investment that Minnesota can make. Again, this isn't a person who taught preschool or has been an educator. He was a financial guy, and if you ever get to hear his story, you know, he will talk about that he came upon this by accident, and then just found the power of the economic investment in early learning. It's also, the bond, a successful bond would also relieve a number of pre-K-5 space issues, you know, that we have at Longfellow, that we have at the NCRC, that we have at Bridgewater, Sibley, and Greenville Park. So it will relieve a number of space pressures, because there are places where we have no more room, you know, to do the programming that we would like. And it really is a space issue that's been exacerbated in the last several years. And finally, it would improve security to the point that if this bond were to pass after things are completed, every pre-K-12 building in the system would have a secure front entrance, and we would have what I consider to be reasonable security measures to make sure that our kids are safe, and yet we are keeping it to be a warm and welcoming learning environment. You know, we do not want our schools hardened to the point where kids feel that they are in prison. I will not allow that. That is just not how we're going to act. But we do need to take very reasonable steps, which we are as part of our plan, to make sure that schools are secure, and that we have control, and that parents can feel comfortable that we have created a space where they can feel that their students are safe every day. I'm sad to say that that has to be a key message, but it's the way that the world is right now. So I just wanted to go through a couple of those things to give you that update as to where we're at, just in terms of going back to that why, that we want every child to have a strong start, you know, regardless of their socioeconomic background or a number of other pieces, and we want kids to attend secure schools. So just a little bit of an update, a little bit of a preview of some of the key messages that we're working on, and just wanted to share that with you this evening. And I'd be happy to take any questions that people might have about our progress.
Excellent. Questions, comments?
I think the, I think the informational campaign, key messages, and how the process of moving forward to really, we know, we have to really have a very clear and compelling message to the community and help them to understand why this is so critical. So I think where we're headed, where you're headed with the key messaging is really, really strong, and I think it'll be really, it'll be fun to watch the informational campaign come together as we, as we move forward.
And if I just add one more thing.
Yes.
If you think about the academic benchmarks that we are so focused on, especially at the elementary level, two that I would highlight would be ready for kindergarten. We know that if children come in ready for kindergarten, we can take them a long way. And then the other predictive piece where these facilities will help us because of the focus on early childhood and the focus on relief of space pressure at the elementaries is our read well by third grade. We do well compared to the rest of the state, but we are not nearly to where we want to be.